Okay, we're live.
Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting today. We have a special meeting. It is Wednesday, 10, October 16th. It's 3 o'clock, we're in the auditorium. We have one item that we are discussing today, which is an ordinance that will be amending some code regarding bed and breakfast here in Eureka Springs. So, Tom, can you do roll call, please?
Anne Salee.
Here.
Mike Welch.
Here.
Susan Harmon.
Here.
Fergie Stewart.
Here.
I'm President Tom Buford, and our staff person is also present at the date.
All right, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance real quick. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so, we could do public comments, but we don't have anybody here. So, like I said, the only item that we have on our agenda is going over these revisions that we have for regarding bed and breakfast. So, that is the only thing that we have on our agenda. So, does anybody want to go ahead and approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda for this one item during this special meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to discuss.
Second?
All right, we've got a motion and a second to go ahead and discuss this. I will just make a note, too, that before anybody makes any motion, let's make sure that we all are clear on every single item that is in front of us, so that we can just give everybody a chance to ask any questions or clarify what is currently in this ordinance. And then at the end, when we're sure everybody is done, we'll go ahead and make a motion to approve when we get there, so. Anne, do you want to go ahead and start?
Yeah, I'd like to go through these one by one. I'm really not sure on this first one. I've got 14.0805 here, K, and it's wedding establishments. It says, "Will read in part as follows: Illegal non-conforming BOB shall be required to pay taxes on their business activities." The code book already states that they have 180 days, and if they don't pay it, we can do show cause. I think the intent was to put in here CUPs.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering about that one, too.
There's no language that CUPs have to pay taxes, so...
Okay, so if you look at Section 2, there is language in there about taxes. Do you want to...
So maybe Section 1 could just be deleted, and Section 2 become Section 1?
Because you are mentioning CUPs and LNCs.
Right.
Do you think that's what you intended?
That's, I think that's what was intended.
All right, does anybody have any questions, or does everybody understand?
Yeah, I see, we're going to strike Section 1, and then renumber all the sections below it.
Okay, so, okay, just read it real quick to make sure. Get rid of 1 and just keep 2?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go on then to number 2. Revocation of a conditional use permit shall add the following language: "All bookings, listings, and advertisements of a conditional use permit must list the business license number in the description or title. The city may revoke a conditional use permit for violation of any condition of the permit, including failure to list the business license number in the description or title and non-payment of CA PC taxes."
Okay, so, my only question on that is, even though I know it makes sense to do that there, I would be nervous about having my business license out there in case somebody tried to buy something or purchase something with my business license number. Now, I would put it on a reservation confirmation that goes to just a guest, but I don't know if I would put it on the web. You can come up to Mike.
Your business license number is already public info. Your business license number is already public information. It's already foillable.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you should have your business license...
So I've got to go ahead and update everything and make sure my business license is in there?
I think it makes sense, because that way these illegal ones aren't going to have a business license number.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, so, if that is added there, then who's sending out the letter that says you need to include your business license on all of your advertising?
I really think that what we need to do is when people get their license, get their business license, we need to have a form that goes in there and just send it to them. These are the requirements of code, you know?
I understand that, it's just you've got to, we're doing this midstream, so a lot of us, like myself, if I weren't sitting here today, there's no way that I would probably know that that is a new requirement.
Well, if we send, why can't we make a checklist and send it out?
I have one, I can just add it on there. Because we, I already created a residential list where they have to sign off and list their manager and all of that.
Okay, so would you do it when the new licenses are issued?
Yeah, yeah, the new license cycle is coming up in December, so I'll be putting that with their business license application, so I'll just add it on there.
Okay, that works.
Perfect, thank you, Ida.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions about that, or...
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, definition of a unit. As it pertains to tourist lodging and bed and breakfast, shall be defined as one bedroom which sleeps two people. Beside the entrance to the room in the house, a bedroom must also contain at least one method of egress. Tom?
That last line, I think we also say one other method of egress. It says beside the entrance to the room in the house, a bedroom must also contain at least one, it's a one method, I think we need to add one other method, so you won't be confused with the...
Okay.
And also, we need to add the word "and a window," because I think every bedroom must have a window on any kind of rental property.
Besides the entrance to the room in the house, a bedroom must also contain at least one other method of egress and a window?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And just so you know, if there's, if they don't have two doors, I did confirm with the previous building inspector that with code, a window does count as another method of egress.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you put the window in there, that will be the other method of egress?
But the window has to be where you can get out of it. I mean, if you're on a second story, you can't, the window, you know, it has...
Yeah, I can say, I mean, but I understand what she's...
But you can have one of the fire ladders or whatever, one of the ones that you can keep by the window that drape over, and that counts as an egress.
I don't think that counts, because I'm going through...
I checked that with the previous building inspector.
So then we really don't have to add window, because he's going to take care of that?
That's up to you guys.
You can, I think, you've got to turn, if you say the window, then you don't need to say an additional, because you're going to have one egress plus a window.
Okay.
That would be considered, according to her, and I had that same question, because, you know, if it's, if it's an emergency and I need to get out the window, I'm going to cheer through it, avoid me with the egress.
Besides the entrance to the room in the house, a bedroom must also contain at least one window?
That would cover both things.
I mean, you can't get into the room unless you have a door.
Right, well, yeah.
So, it's a box, but you've got to have a way in. So, if we're just, I mean, you have to have a door to get into the room, so...
Do we even need that last sentence?
Okay, so here's the question. I get what you're saying, but if they are applying for their certificate of occupancy, the building inspector should, and the fire should, make sure that they are meeting their requirements, right? So we may not need that sentence, you're right, right? Because they have to get a certificate of occupancy in order to get their license.
That's my thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Because if you're deferred to the fire code for safety, they're going to say what they need.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so we're taking that last sentence off?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, number 4, bed and breakfast. With the exception of the existing LNC properties and CUPs at the time of this ordinance, shall not be permitted in zones R1, R2, and R3. Henceforth, it shall be a misdemeanor to rent property as bed and breakfast within a residential zone within the city of Eureka Springs punishable by a fine of up to $250 for each offense. Each 24-hour period of any bed and breakfast rental shall be considered a separate offense. Those properties, Ida has worked those up on the next several pages, and we have been over those, and I will bring to your attention, there are three that are listed...
These are the LNCs?
Not only listed as LNCs, but also as conditional use permits. They were LNCs, they added property, and they got CUPs. I was wrong, I thought the LNC went away, it does not. So they'll still be legal, non-conforming, and bed and breakfast. So, should 6 Douglas, 23 Hillside, or 5 Summit sell, they will have to come to the Planning Commission to transfer how many of her units they have that are CUPs, if that makes sense.
I have one question on the, hands down, so I'll pop up my hands.
Are you on the same section?
Number 4.
Oh, you want to go back to 4?
That's what we're on.
We're on 4.
We moved everything up one.
Oh, oh, yeah, I got you, sorry. Okay, yes.
This, where it says misdemeanor, do we, are we saying that we're going to establish a criminal offense for this? Because misdemeanor is a criminal offense, it goes under record permanently, it's a crime. The hit's force, it shall be a misdemeanor, that is a criminal act, or do we have the authority to make a criminal law for this particular, do you understand what I'm saying?
So you're saying maybe change the word misdemeanor to this violation?
Yeah, violation, I'm just saying, am I wrong here?
No, I agree with you, yeah, we shouldn't...
Misdemeanor is a criminal act to be established.
So, so many...
I know what she knows.
Go ahead, go ahead.
That was drafted by the city attorney, so...
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ida.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Does anybody have any questions on that one?
Nope.
You can still change it if you want to, but that was...
No, you clarified it, yeah, thank you for clarifying.
All right, there you go.
I just have, I just have a suggestion on the way it's written. When it says bed and breakfast, with the exception of the existing LNC properties and CUPs at the time of this ordinance, shall not be permitted in zones R1, R2, and R3. I wish, instead of saying it that way, we could say, say RAF, reference Section D and E.
Now, say that again?
So, it says bed and breakfast with the exception of the existing LNC properties and CUPs at the time of this ordinance shall not be permitted in zones R1, R2, and R3. What I would like it to say is, in parentheses, referencing Section D and Section E, only because, or, or maybe it's Section 10, it just, to me, sounds like we're leaving that out there without actually referencing the list. So, it's kind of like, you know, well, we know we've got existing LNC properties and CUPs, and whatever they were at the time of the ordinance, but you've gone through the, you've taken the time to go ahead and list what they are here, and it would be nice to have that list referenced in this ordinance, rather than making it sound like, whichever ones are out there at the time of this ordinance, I wish we could just say, these are the ones that are the properties that are in question, not, you know, well, maybe there's some more out there, or maybe there's another one here, or whatever.
So at the end of that, R1, R2, and R3, you just add, in parentheses, C, Section D and E?
Or maybe it's an appendix, I don't know, but...
Well, it's not only Section D and E, you've got to go to the next page after that, because you've got R3.
Right, so, would it be easier just to do an appendix? Or would it make sense to reference each one of those sections?
This is based on the previous short-term rental ordinance, so this is all, this is the language that was used before for short-term rentals.
I understand, I'm just...
So, that's not existing, it lists existing conditional use permits and existing, it says existing LNCs, so there's not, they can't just say that...
I mean, I understand what you're saying.
They can't just say that, well, I existed before, because it's already listed in here, you don't need to reference it.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Ida, because it'll have the ordinance number underneath the list, right? Or, Ida, will they do it, approve it?
What was that?
Once this, if this ordinance is approved...
It'll be cited, yeah.
It'll be cited underneath here, so...
Okay, that's fine. I just know that we, since you've taken the time...
I know, I appreciate that.
You know, to do this, you know how many times we've gone back and forth between different pages and...
I know.
Books and whatever, to make sure that we've, we're all looking at the same thing. All right, if you think that will solve it, then I don't have a problem with it.
Section 5. Upon transfer of an LNC bed and breakfast or continuance of a CUP to new ownership, the owners must reside on the property. That's what I think.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, that's Section 5. Section 6. Chapter 14 zoning shall be amended with, like, the following, oh, it is all these addresses.
Which, which one did we get rid of on Spring Street? Was that 256 or 250?
That was a tourist lodging.
Oh, that's right, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, that was a tourist lodging. They're, they're next. Okay, so, I have one other thing. So since we're changing all this, I had, I hope you printed it, I had, Cassie, I put the old definition of the bed and breakfast, and then I drafted a new definition of the bed and breakfast. And the new definition of a bed and breakfast is an accommodation offered by a private home owner occupied consisting of a room not to exceed five units for the night and breakfast the next morning for one inclusive price. Guests may not stay longer than 29 days per guest. Website, social media, and/or all advertisement must include bed and breakfast and that breakfast is served.
Do you have one question?
Yeah, that's okay.
I have a question, it says owner occupied, so you cannot have a live-in onsite manager, it has to be the owner living in?
Once, for what, for what we have right now, and we have some that have managers, we can't take that away.
Okay, cool.
What we're saying is that if they sell that property...
Transfer.
Transfer the property, whether it be grandfather or CUP, and it's going to stay a bed and breakfast, it must be owner occupied, no more managers. If they sell, they sell it, and the people choose to make it into a private residence, it just goes away.
Okay, right.
But I did not know if you even want to change it, I'm just throwing it out there, we can leave it as is, but the current one we have does say manager.
I have a question, because of what Mike just brought up. I think there's somewhere else in code where it's, it talks about, talks about tourist lodging, or is it weekly rentals, and it gives the date as to when it went into effect. So, is that something you think would be a clarification as to what's expected for new ones from this date? Because we do have a...
To say something like effective, the date of this ordinance...
All new, all new, all new CUPs, whatever.
Well, why don't we do this, because we've got it in here. On number 5, it says upon transfer of an LNC bed and breakfast, it must be owners must reside on the property. So maybe I'm just repeating something that we don't need to repeat, and we just leave that definition alone.
I agree with you.
I don't want to make, we've worked on this for so long, and it gets to be so confusing every time we do something different. I don't, I don't want to overwhelm City Council.
I think that does work, because it's upon the transfer.
Okay, so then we don't need, we can just, we can just put this in the...
Okay, I do have a question, though. So, when we were, we, you know, the question I have is about the 29 days. If that is currently in our code as, what did it say in our code? Not more than...
30 days.
But how was it phrased? Sorry. And I only, I'm only asking about that because, although it's not going to be addressed over here, because if you're on Airbnb, it lists long-term rentals as 28 days or more. If our code says not more than 30 days, is that a, is that a, do we need to clarify that?
I don't know that, area of luxury, trying to address...
Definition...
Okay, hold on, what does it say?
Definition of bed and breakfast, a dwelling or area containing one or more structures, at least one of which is occupied by owner or manager onsite, where for compensation lodging and meals are provided, generally no longer than 30 days per guest, but not more than five units.
Okay, so no longer than 30 days.
So, we would, we would need to change the definition, because the definition says owner or manager onsite.
Now, that's a conflict right there, those two things conflict, we want to keep it like it is.
I mean, if, 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 yeah, I mean, I just think if we're saying no longer than 30 days, but we're looking at properties that are listing themselves as available for long-term rental of 28 days or more, I just think we need to clear, we need to clean that up in our code.
Well...
Do you want to keep the existing, or just change the 30 days? Keep the, keep the old existing code.
We'll also, we'll also need to strike or manager onsite from the definition.
Yeah. So, how do you want to go about doing that, Anne?
All right, so if we strike or manager onsite of their original code, where for compensation, lodging, and meals are provided...
Well, you put down breakfast in the other, the new one.
We could put for lodging and breakfast instead of meals. Okay, let me, provided.
Do you want me to bring this over here, Anne?
Generally no longer than...
Do you want to look at it?
That'd be great, thank you. A dwelling or area containing one or more structures, at least one of which is occupied by an owner, where for compensation lodging and breakfast are provided.
Okay.
And that would be period, guests may not stay longer than 28 days, just spell it out.
Cancel that generally, I'll put just note, cancel, cancel generally, that leaves it too vague.
Guests may not stay longer than 30 days.
Right, right, yeah.
28 days, I'm sorry. Longer than 28 days, but not more than five units.
You're going to have to change that if you put a period, that's not a... Okay, so maybe it says guests may, guests may, this is a new sentence, guests may not stay longer than 28 days, and total units may not exceed five units, or something like Said units twice. Guests may not stay longer than 28 days.
This is not more than, that would be not to exceed, we already have not more than...
28 days. And total units may not exceed five.
And total units may not exceed five.
Five units, yeah.
Five units. For the purpose of this section onsite shall be defined as adjoining, sharing a boundary, and shall not include properties separated. Okay, so the onsite, I thought was meant for the managers, because we've had managers that have lived across the street, they've lived down the street, they've lived next door. If we're getting rid of managers, do we need that last sentence?
Well, well, yes, I think we do, because you could still have an owner that purchased a building, I mean, although they're saying they have to live onsite, so...
So, the first, okay, so let me just read this as, let me go back to this. A dwelling or area containing one or more structures, at least one of which is occupied by an owner onsite, where for compensation lodging and breakfast are provided, guests may not stay longer than 28 days, and total units may not exceed five. For the purpose of this section onsite shall be defined as adjoining, i.e. sharing a boundary, and shall not include properties separated by city, street, roadway, green space, or alley.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we need to leave that in there, just so it's very, very clear.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so, just to go back, we're scratching Section 1.
Okay, I have one, I do have another question. If we go to, if we go to the lists of properties, we've got 105 and 109 Breezy Point Circle.
Okay, I'll let I explain this one.
They are one property together, just two addresses, and they have a CUP with them conjoining.
Okay.
So their CUP says 105 and 109 Breezy Point.
Okay, so, okay, they would have to come in for a change if they sold one of those buildings? I mean, it would just, right? Just like if I sold one of my buildings, I have different addresses, so, which comes, which is, again, going back to then my property, it's not 50 Joe, it's 50 Joe Street, that's the address of the property. If you're going to list addresses, it needs to say 50 Joe Street. The question is, is it 50 Joe Street, or 50 Joe Inn makes up, 50 Joe Street, it makes up, it encompasses 15 Summit, and then 15 Summit A and B? So, is that an issue, or are you good on it just being one address?
I'm going based off of what is listed on their CUP.
Okay.
What is written on the CUP.
Okay, but it doesn't list the addresses separately, then?
No, it lists both together on the CUP.
Okay, so can you just make sure that it's changed to 50 Joe Street, and not just 50... Okay, so can you just make sure that it's changed to 5OJO Street and not just 5OJO?
None of the...I mean, the rest don't have...not all of them have a street or avenue or whatever on them. I mean, it's the same. If you want to make that change, you're welcome to.
I mean, I guess I don't have to, but I see, like, 104 Wall Street.
I see what she's saying, Ida, because I didn't know OJO was a street till just now. I thought the name of the...
It is the name of the...it's 5OJO Inn.
And I know how these streets...
Right.
But I didn't know we had an OJO Street.
Yeah, it is OJO Street.
Okay. That's...
Gotcha.
You cut it. Is that it, Susan, on your one?
I think that's...
Do you want to replace Section 1 with this definition, or do you want to add it to the end?
We could just replace Section 1 with the definition, couldn't we? Wouldn't that make it easier?
Is that too confusing?
Where are we at? Section 1?
Section would now become the new definition of the bed and breakfast.
Oh, okay. Instead of moving them all down, we'll just put the one on top?
Yeah, instead of moving them all down, we just make this the Section 1.
I will give that code reference so you can add it in there in your motion.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Really, the...just the change, just to reconfirm, we are taking out the current Section 1 and replacing it with the modified bed and breakfast definition. We are taking out of Section 4 the very last sentence.
Correct.
We are asked on existing usual conditional uses, we're putting 5OJO Street.
I think that's it, right?
And we need the...I think we need the...before we make a motion, we need the ordinance number.
No, that would be done at the City Council.
Yeah.
Ida, do we need something before we can make a motion?
Like Title 14.
Oh, oh, okay. So, that they know what we're...okay, so, this is a...these are...this is a...this will be a motion to amend...
This is Section...the old ordinance number, Ida, is that what we need?
Should be definitions. Should be at the end of the 1408.
Do I...is this what we need, or is it this is what we need?
Yeah.
14.08.13.
Right, so I was saying 14.08.
So, it's a motion to amend 140813 and present to City Council the changes?
Right.
Yes.
Correct.
So, on your...on your Section 1, it's 14.08.130. I know.
Okay. I have a question real quick while we're standing there. Are all of these items in Chapter 14?
Yes.
Okay, so our motion will be to amend bed and breakfast, or our motion will be to amend items within Chapter 14 related to bed and breakfast, related to our bed and breakfast discussion today. Will that work?
Or should we read...
Or is this...or do we just go by your title? An ordinance...well, we're not doing an ordinance.
We're amending an ordinance.
Yeah, we're amending an ordinance.
Okay, so our motion is to...yeah, but it's 1408. Is it all 1408?
It is all Title 14. It's not all 14.
Okay, that's it.
And we're adding...we are adding Section 5 and Section 6. Those are not currently in the ordinance.
Right.
So, I have a question about that. Would it be when you have the sequence, would it be 1408.08, and then you've got 1408.13? Are you going to be putting 1408-14-15, et cetera? You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, so the...
Yeah, like it says, you know, existing, right now existing, you have up to Section 4. Section 5 doesn't have a ESMC number, neither does 6 and 7.
No, that'll get...that'll get added. The 14...like, the 1408.13 is the...referring to the title, chapter, and section. Sections will be added in where they're needed by codification. It won't be listed in the ordinance.
Yep.
Good question.
Okay, so, this is what I've written right now. Motion to present Title 14 changes and additions per this special meeting, which is 101624, to City Council.
Yep.
That'll work?
Yeah, I think that works. Does everyone agree?
Yep.
Who's going to make a motion? Does you want to read this? Sorry, I'm trying to make it short and sweet. Does anybody else have any questions? Any other things you want to change or whatever? Because this is the only motion we can make and the only one we can vote on in this special meeting. Can you read my writing?
Motion to present Title 14 changes and additions per special meeting 101624. Motion to add Section 14.8.130 to City Council.
Second.
Okay, I have one question. We've already said we're doing changes and additions. Do you need to add that section number at the end? You said 1408.13?
13. That is the bed and breakfast definition that we're changing.
Okay, but it's all in Chapter 14, though.
Yes, but we're specifically changing that when it's not here. I want to...yeah, let's just...
Okay, all right. Sorry. Can you just repeat it real quick?
Motion to present Title 14 changes and additions for the special meeting 101624. Motion to add 14.08.130 to City Council.
And Mike, did you second it?
I seconded it.
Yeah, that's why I was asking if we needed to say that.
Motion to amend my motion.
Okay. Will you take back your second?
I take back my second.
Okay.
Motion to present Title 14 changes and additions per special meeting 101624. Motion to add 14.08 to City Council.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, none opposed. So, this will be presented to City Council at the...we're hopeful at the 1028...I think it's 1028, 1028 meeting of City Council, where they'll have a chance to go ahead and read over all of this, and hopefully we'll get these changes done before the end of the year because we have that moratorium that's expiring, so...
Motion to adjourn.
I was just going to say, you're going to have somebody there.
Yeah. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Good job, Ann.
Thank you, Ann.